Good evening, I'm Carolyn Rye, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this ninth day of September 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, will you take roll call, please, for attendance?
Madam Chair, all Board members are currently present in the School Board chamber.
Thank you. So now we'll ask for a moment of silence. And please stand as able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Agenda Item 5. Tonight, there are no awards or recognitions. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay, Dr. Spence, we look forward to your report.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board. So here are just a few items of interest for you and our families to know. As everyone knows, yesterday was the first day of school for the 2020-21 school year. As with any year, there are a variety of emotions and setbacks that will occur, and this year was certainly no different. And even with a multi-state outage of security, which brought our Internet down for a bit, I can say, though, that the feedback for day one was overwhelmingly positive, as we heard a little bit of earlier this evening. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to our students, our family, and especially our staff members and our leadership for staying positive and remaining flexible and offering support and understanding as we opened this school year virtually. This year may not have started off the same, but we know the love and support that our teachers and staff have for the children of VB Schools never changes, and for that, I send out my sincere thanks to our entire community. Two, if you have visited our Division website homepage starting yesterday, you will have seen the Health Metrics slide, which will now be updated Monday through Friday at roughly 10:00 AM. These metrics will reflect the most current data from the Virginia Department of Health. If you'll click on the image, you'll be taken to the Division's Health Metrics page, which will offer the most up-to-date information that's available to us. Three, the Department of Technology continues to offer families and staff extended help hours, Monday through Thursday, from 7:30 AM to 6:30 PM, and Friday from 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM. And this is to assist families and staff with technology issues and password resets. If you need assistance outside of those hours, or if you need helpful tips to resolve the most frequent technology problems, please visit the Department of Technology's support website at www.vbcpsupport.com. Fourth, the USDA, as you heard earlier, has announced that they will extend our ability to provide meal service at no charge for all students at all VBCPS schools. This will work as it did during the summer, and meals will be offered through pickup service with bag meals, including a breakfast and lunch. Pickup is available Monday through Friday from 10:30 to 1:30, and the Friday bag will contain meals for Saturday and Sunday. If a different pickup time is needed, as you heard earlier, we're encouraging some flexibility, and we would ask our community to please contact the cafeteria manager at your child's school to make other arrangements. Children enrolled in the Safe Learning Centers and in the VB Parks and Recs program will eat for free, and food service information will continue to be updated if any changes occur as the school year continues to unfold. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. That concludes my report.
Point of order, Chairwoman Rye, I would like you to address the early email that you sent out to all Board members and to enforce the policy, please.
What Mrs. Holt speaks to concerns the mask mandate for this School Board chambers, which is considered a public place. The School Board has agreed to require masks, absent and approved medical accommodation. We're trying to model what's in place for this building filled with staff, as well as for teachers and students, once there's a face-to-face return. I, on behalf of the Governance Committee and the Board, sent out an email August 18, spelling out the process for anyone who feels they need to request an accommodation. And just as with our staff, an ADA form was provided for completion and, you know, to begin that process. In addition, we've offered multiple alternatives for any staff or colleagues to participate who, for whatever reason, cannot or would not wear a mask absent an accommodation, and that includes Zoom participation either elsewhere in the building or from home. So with that, and given just the -- this is not coming just from me, but from multiple colleagues, we are respectfully asking our colleague, Mrs. Hughes, to please wear her mask during the meeting, in the interest of consistency and cooperation.
I'm respectfully declining to wear the mask while I'm appropriately distanced, as does meet the mandate, because I cannot wear a mask for an extended period of time. I do everyone the courtesy of popping the mask on briefly when I have to walk by anybody or move around, and I don't think this should be an issue. I'm willing to bet everyone who wants me to leave has been in a restaurant and taken your mask off when you've gotten to your table. I would be sitting closer to you in a restaurant than I am right now.
We can take a vote as a School Board to just enforce -- we've already -- the School Board has had three weeks to object to this process.
Okay. Ms. Rye, you stated that the School Board voted on this, to approve this. I was never a part of that conversation, so I'm not aware of it. So you said "School Board," and that would entail that all 11 of us had participated in that. I have not. So the School Board, Ms. Hughes, has a medical condition that prevents her from wearing a mask for long periods of time. She is not an employee, so the same forms that an employee would fill out does not apply to Ms. Hughes as an elected official. She's properly distanced. She meets the Governor's mandate, and I ask that we just move on with this meeting.
We're not -- there's been three weeks to state an objection to the process that was spelled out in the email, and there were no such--
So who gets to decide process in an email? Can I send an email out and decide process?
The email was sent out on behalf, at the time of the Governance Committee, where this was discussed, with all members present, that it was a reasonable expectation to ask that the medical documentation be the form that was provided.
Mrs. Rye, I think reasonable accommodations have been offered through Zoom. Wherever Ms. Hughes decides to Zoom in, she may Zoom in in one of the other conference rooms from this building without wearing a mask. She can even Zoom from home and participate fully in this process. So I think when you have 11 members on a board and 10 members of that board are abiding by the rules that we set forth, and I know that they are rules, so, you know, we choose to abide by the rules, and one person decides that they don't have to do those rules. And these are the very things that might happen in a classroom. We are trying to set an example for our students when they do return face-to-face. So if we don't enforce this rule here on the School Board, then we might as well tell our teachers, "Well, you don't have to enforce the rule in your classroom."
So, Mrs. Hughes, will you reconsider?
I'm unclear as to what authority the Governance Committee has over School Board members, for one thing. Second of all, as far as the mandate goes, you are supposed to wear a mask unless you can be properly distanced. We are seated properly distanced, and it doesn't apply if there is a medical condition that prohibits you from doing that. Based on what, you know, she just said, I guess we're all going to die if you don't know my medical condition, and you're all safe if you do. Is that correct? Because I am properly distanced. You put me here. I only get up to use the restroom or leave in the, you know, middle of the break. I went to a room way far away from all of you.
My concern right now is we have 60 speakers to listen to, and we have to move this meeting forward.
Do we need security here?
I'm sorry. I want to do the right thing right now. I just--
Madam Chair, the School Board's had this discussion several times. If you remember the retreat, this was a major issue for us. After that, we came back and discussed what you wanted done, how we were going to handle speakers, how people in this building were going to handle it. This is considered -- we've determined that this is a public space on there, and that you were going to wear masks. I was asked of staff, if staff needs an accommodation, they have to go through Human Resources. The ongoing concern with me, because there was a discussion whether I could approve them or not for the School Board retreat, the decision was you wanted to make sure a medical professional followed the same ADA accommodation, determine what's appropriate. I'm not saying that Mrs. Hughes' request is inappropriate, but we decided at that time we would go with our Director of Public Health with Mrs. Mary Shaw, and then we revise the form and send it out. That way, a medical professional could talk to an individual asking for an accommodation, determine what's appropriate. That would be communicated back to the Chair, and we would follow that. My understanding at this time is there's not been anything filed officially with Mrs. Shaw to be able to do that accommodation. I'm not saying that it wouldn't be appropriate. I'm just saying that your process was to verify what was appropriate that would handle with the medical professionals. In an ADA situation, it's an ongoing discussion between the individual, the medical provider, and the public entity as to what is appropriate and what can be accommodated under the circumstances. I hear what Mrs. Hughes is requesting, but I can't verify that, because you've determined that you need a medical professional to do that. If she files the ADA form, that could be approved, but this time, it's my understanding that that has not been filed and verified. So you can make the determination as a School Board, what the rules are going to be at your meeting, and how you're going to do that. If there seems to be some concern right now, I think you could make a -- you could ask to make a motion and the School Board to vote as to whether you're going to allow an exception to the mask rule for the rest of this meeting or other meetings, and vote on that, make that determination. But this is your meeting. You control the terms of your meeting and the terms of the building. It has been discussed multiple times with the School Board, and the determination was that we would be wearing masks during these meetings as our open meetings. The exception has been occasion when a speaker is allowed to come up to the podium, take their mask off temporarily, and leave, and that's an accommodation. You will see that with one of our speakers later this evening. We'll be coming in just with speaking at that point, but will not be remaining in the room.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion?
Just quick questions. So, Ms. Attorney Lynn Eddie, you said that paperwork has not been filed for the ADA. Does that need to be filed? Is that what you're saying?
Your suggestion was to verify the way we would do anybody else and have the appropriate conversation about accommodations, that it would be filed, that form that we sent out to you, and we modified the form for School Board members. That way, it wasn't me, it wasn't Mrs. Rye, it wasn't the School Board Clerk or the Superintendent participating in that conversation. It would be, you would send your form in if you're a School Board member, with your medical person explaining if it needed to be further discussed. Mrs. Shaw would look at it. She's a medical professional. They would work through the accommodations, and then Mrs. Shaw would communicate back to the Chair what the accommodation was that they were providing.
But as Mrs. Hughes had said, her illness, whatever she had, that was still confidential, correct?
Correct. We normally would not discuss it. We wouldn't ask somebody to discuss that, and that's why you use the form and you work with the medical professionals back and forth in the form. And all they came out is to the entity, what is the accommodation that's appropriate.
Well, speaking to what Ms. Hughes said, no, I will not die if I don't know what her accommodation is, but due respect to her situation, and to accommodate us and to be conducive to the situation. I'm wondering, does she have a problem, or can't she file the ADA paperwork, just out of respect to what we're asking to just solve this and squash it, because there are other -- and this is important, but I'm more pressing moments that's on the books. So would that be out of the norm to ask, out of respect, to follow the ADA, or speaking to Ms. Shaw, and we don't have to know your condition. It's confidential, so we can move on.
So to answer that, I received an email, as we all did, that we would file paperwork with Ms. Shaw, and the end of the email said, "And Ms. Shaw is on vacation." And then we had a meeting the following Tuesday, and then I went out of town on vacation. I have not taken the time to have a doctor's appointment to make sure that they have all this stuff in writing, and frankly, I don't think that I should have to. I will tell you, I have been that insensitive person before that has seen somebody park in a handicap spot and went, "I don't see a handicap." And you know what? I was wrong, and that's what you're all doing right here now, which is wonderful, considering this is the team putting together equity, diversity, and inclusion. So kudos to you. If you would all like me to leave, I can do that. But please know, that's exactly what you're doing right now, and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
So I believe that is the request.
So, Ms. Lynn Eddie, an accommodation might be for Ms. Hughes to sit in the back of the room, like she's doing now, away from people, not six feet, not three feet, not six feet, not 10 feet, 20 to 30 feet. An accommodation for her, since ADA accommodation is for the person requesting it, might be for her to sit in the corner of the room, and when she gets up and moves around, wear her mask. That might be--
That could be, yes.
Okay. And an accommodation wouldn't be, if you're afraid, because she's not wearing a mask, you leave, but you also have that right. Any of us have the right to go Zoom in from the next building. But when you do an accommodation, it's talking about the person that filed it. So an accommodation might be to do exactly what she's doing now. Sit back there, away from everybody.
That could be one. I will say, it's unique to the circumstances and the nature of the medical condition. It could be the ventilation, the size of the room. It could be other people in the room that have to be here, who cannot be somewhere else. That's why they're individual decisions. And so you would talk back and forth about what could do. It could very well be that remaining there and that far from somebody is an appropriate accommodation.
So we could be back here in two weeks with Ms. Hughes sitting exactly where she is, doing exactly what she's doing.
That is a possibility, yes.
Okay.
We have to move forward.
One I'd like to make is that it has been a month since you sent out the first email asking people to file the correct paperwork. And whether or not someone decides to go on vacation or not, the paperwork, the ADA compliance paper, was sent electronically and could have been filled out electronically. It didn't have to be submitted as a hard paper. So the excuse of, "I was on vacation, and I haven't bothered to make a doctor's appointment yet," to me is not acceptable at this time.
So where do we go from here?
At this point, you don't have a motion on the floor, and you'd have to decide. As the Chair, you have responsibility for ordering decorum during a meeting, and you would have to make the decision on there, or you can accept a motion from the floor as to how you want to proceed.
Is there a motion, or else we--
Point of order, we haven't even adopted the agenda. Can we make motions if we haven't even adopted our agenda yet?
Adopting the agenda doesn't start the meeting, but that's one way to do it. You've already started your meeting, but--
At this point, it's up to the Chair. If the Chair will accept a motion.
We would just like to stick to the rule right now, and hopefully by the time of the next meeting, there'll be paperwork submitted, and this will be resolved. Or please keep in communication so that we know if the process is moving forward, and that's a reasonable -- we can be reasonable about that as well.
Is that the Chair's ruling?
Yes.
Madam Chair, are you ruling that you're asking Mrs. Hughes to leave the room if she's not wearing a mask?
I believe that's the majority consensus of the School Board right now, and to ask that you please submit the required form, and hopefully this will all get resolved.
It seems that the rule coming in has been that everyone would wear a mask unless an ADA accommodation was in there. At this point, they've not made a motion to accept that or a rule as to whether they want to overrule the Chair's ability to do it. She does have responsibility for decorum and order in the room.
So hearing no motion, just repeat that this--
Excuse me, but I asked if you would accept a motion, and I did not hear anything.
It might clarify matters at this point, Madam Chair. If you accept a motion, see if there's a second, get a vote, then you would have -- you would know what the majority of the Board was ruling.
All right, Mrs. Anderson?
Well, I make a motion that everyone 100% wear a mask in this room, and if they are not wearing a mask, then we ask that person to leave the room. And if it happens to be a School Board member, that member may join us through a Zoom meeting somewhere else in the building.
I'm going to step in at this point. The ADA does require that you make reasonable accommodations for those individuals who may not do that, so I think making it an ultimatum of that nature, I think you might want to consider, Mrs. Anderson, modifying your role to wear a mask unless you have an ADA accommodation or your medical reason for it. I do know you have a speaker coming in that we're making an accommodation for. We cannot wear a mask later tonight, so I don't think you want to make an all-out rule that applies.
I will amend my motion. Is there a second?
Clarification, then. The motion is that individuals in this room participating in the meeting who have not been provided an accommodation will wear their masks during the meeting or otherwise leave the meeting?
Correct.
Mrs. Holt, is your understanding a seconding?
Any additional discussion, Mrs. -- sorry, Manning.
Yeah, I would just like to read, I believe this is from the Governor's Mandate regarding masks. "Any person who declines to wear face covering because of a medical condition shall not be required to produce or carry medical documentation, verifying the stated condition, nor shall that person be required to identify the precise underlying medical condition." So I believe this goes against the -- even the Governor's mandate, and you're setting yourself--
Mrs. Lynn Eddie, just for the viewing public, this is a gross waste of time. We are 30 minutes into a meeting. That we should be 30 minutes into hearing our speakers. Nobody's filed ADA paperwork. The Governance Committee agreed that everybody in this room is wearing a mask. It's a slap in the face to everybody who's following the rules. I worry about this greatly in our schools and in our classrooms, and this can't happen. Do we have a face shield in the room? Can someone give her a face shield, something? Because I would very much like to hear the people who came to speak, because I believe that what they're waiting out there to talk about is far more important than this. Do we -- would you be complying to a face shield, at least? Okay. Okay. I don't know what to say. I just -- can we just move on, please?
So there's a motion on the floor that we need to vote on. Can you repeat it?
Ms. Lynn Eddie, would you mind repeating?
The motion on the floor is that the School Board is voting that persons participating in this meeting will wear a mask unless they have provided medical evidence or gotten an accommodation for medical reasons. That will include speakers, anyone else participating in the meeting. I think that's right.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you call for a vote, please?
Please raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion on the floor. Please raise your hand if you are opposed to the motion on the floor. Thank you. Madam Chair, voting in favor was Ms. Anderson, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Rye, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Felton, and Ms. Owens. Eight in favor. Those opposed were Ms. Weems, Ms. Hughes, and Ms. Manning. Three opposed. The motion passed eight to three.
Okay, so, Mrs. Hughes, we hope you can join in via Zoom.
Ms. Rye, I drove Ms. Hughes here, so I'm going to have to leave and be able to go home and access my computer. If I could please get a Zoom link, and I would appreciate it, if you hold off votes until I'm able to access that.
Can we ask you both to see Mr. Din out in the hall to arrange for that? Thank you. Hearing of citizens and delegations on agenda items. The School Board will now hear comments on agenda items from citizens and delegations who signed up with our clerk prior to this meeting. In-person speakers will be called first, followed by speakers participating via Zoom or telephone. It's not necessary for speakers to ask if they can be heard. Speakers should begin speaking once their name is called. As a reminder, each speaker has four minutes to present and will be given a 30-second warning before time expires. Once the speaker's time has expired, the next speaker will be cued to speak. Please keep in mind, the School Board invites the public to also submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. So, Madam Clerk, with that, would you please proceed with our in-person speakers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker is Mathias Paul Telkamp.
Welcome. Thank you, Chairperson Rye, Board members, and Dr. Spence. My name is Mathias Paul Telkamp, and I'm a parent-- My name is Mathias Paul Telkamp and I'm a parent, citizen, and resident of Virginia Beach. And I want to start off by saying to a few of you, bless your heart. Equity is something that we should all be concerned about and for those who were part of the committee, it may seem that people of color were their focus, but I understand that they chose to outline multiple ways in which equity can be denied. And as a straight white male, it never crossed my mind how limiting such rules can be, how people could be denied something through words that exclude them without expressly excluding them. We know that the Constitution gave slaveholding rights without expressly saying that it was legal. The equity policy that is being presented needs to be approved for everyone's benefit. What is happening on equity policy is a request for authorization to spend funds is being raised and questions are being raised about the ability of the Superintendent to be fiscally responsible, but there is much that is hidden in the machination of ill intent. We do not question everything that he has authorization to spend and why are we questioning this one expenditure? When companies, executives often are allowed a limit to spend without having to get authorizations for it. Department manager may be a few thousand dollars, director could be a 50,000, an executive could spend a million, and the Board never gets involved. That is considered day-to-day business. So when a request is made to spend money that is being portrayed as a blank check, we all know that it's just a way for opponents to stall movement on enacting a policy in order to stop its progress. We know that Chairperson Rye appointed the Board members to the committee. We know that Dr. Parrott was appointed and Dr. Parrott has only been doing her job as her title portrays. Authority to select members was made with all the bylaws in place and yet there is outrage over this. Why? Because outrage is just dog whistling and pearl clutching and a way to stop progress. What is the purpose? To get as many people possible to speak about how wrong it is. This is an attempt to get voters' attention and fame and atrocity. Politics should not be the day-to-day business of the Board and the business of the Board should be to get work done. We need this equity policy and should have the study done. Kids are aware and tuned in to the world around them. We are not where we need to be as a country or as a state and is hurting students and teachers. And there are many reasons, but here are just a few. A teacher recently stated that someone had told her to leave Virginia Beach just to go to Portsmouth and Norfolk to teach, something that is blatantly racist and this is... Needs to be reported and action behind it. Students hear slur words in the hallways of their schools. Jewish families were marginalized just this year by the Board decision to start school next year in interference with the Jewish High Holy Day of Rosh Hashanah.
30 seconds.
Gay students do not have an opportunity to ask questions they have during sex ed for fear of being outed or bullied. And I could expand on these reasons, but I am limited on time and ask you to support the equity policy today. When we are allowing these behaviors, then we let ignorance and hate win. When you impede progress for the sake of grandstanding, you show hatred is alive and the form just takes a different form.
And that is time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Williams. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Williams and I am a parent and employee of VBCPS. I would like to begin by reading an email I sent to the School Board, Dr. Parrott and Dr. Spence, on August 26, 2020. I sent this email following the August 25th School Board meeting. The email read as follows. Dear School Board members, I was watching the School Board meeting last night and heard some concerning comments from Ms. Manning in regard to the new equity policy that is being proposed. First, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Spence and Dr. Parrott for speaking the truth and educating Ms. Manning about equity and the need for change in VBCPS. As Dr. Robin D'Angelo states in her book, "White Fragility: Why It's So Hard for White People to Talk About Racism," Ms. Manning seems to be in denial about the racial inequities we have in education, specifically at the beach. One question she asked Dr. Spence that I would like to shed some light on was something to the effect of, "Do you think we have racist teachers or racism in Virginia Beach Public Schools?" I am a mother of two Black daughters who have experienced racism in every school they've attended in the beach. That includes Glenwood Elementary, Salem Middle School, Bayside High School, and First Colonial High School. Each incident that happened, my husband and I requested meetings with administration only to be told, "That couldn't be true. This teacher would never do that. That administrator would never treat students like that," and so forth. We even went so far as to meet with someone in the Department of School Leadership only to be dismissed in a similar way. So yes, we have racism in VBCPS from teachers to top-level administrators and to this day, those teachers nor administrators have had any disciplinary action in regard to how they treated our daughters. Just imagine how my daughters feel. What does that tell them? VBCPS doesn't value them because they're Black? VBCPS doesn't trust them because they're Black? Their voice doesn't matter because they're Black? And the list goes on. The evidence of inequities and racism shows up throughout the VBCPS system in several ways, such as we have segregated schools, the majority of our teachers, principals, senior leadership, and schoolroom members are white. Conversely, the majority of our custodial staff are Black and Brown. So when the Board is mandated to take equity training to ensure they learn what racism looks like, that it does exist in VBCPS and ways to combat it, that should be something everyone willingly participates in if they truly want what's best for all of our children. We have a lot of work to do and I hope this email helps to open everyone's eyes to the reality that yes, we have racism in VBCPS and we must work to make VBCPS an anti-racist school system. And I signed a very concerned Black parent. Please note, to date, the only Board members that have taken time to respond to my email were Ms. Owens and Ms. Felton, the only two Black members on the Board. Based on the lack of response from the majority of the School Board members, I have come to the conclusion that they either agree with Ms. Manning that racism doesn't exist in VBCPS, or they are choosing not to acknowledge it. In either case, my fear is the problem with racism in the school system will not be adequately addressed.
30 seconds.
Can I say something really quick? I hear the 30 seconds. My daughters are coming, they won't take four minutes. Can I just finish? Can I share some of their time when they come in or how does this work?
You only have 23 seconds left.
Okay, so can I speak with them then? In either case, my fear is the problem with racism in the school system will not be adequately addressed. Since the School Board has full power to address this issue like no other entity in the system, my request on behalf of the students that most affected by racism is that you vote yes on this policy. Voting for the equity policy makes you part of the solution. Voting against it makes you part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amani Williams.
Good evening. Welcome. Good evening. I am here today representing Black youth. I have experienced racial injustices while in school from both classmates and teachers. My question to the School Board is, what is being done, what is being put in place to handle claims of racism? Racism is a threat to our lives as students and should not be taken lightly. When a student complains of racism, there should be consequences as there are for anything else such as teething on a test or checking your phone in class. Schools became desegregated in 1954 and yet they somehow are still segregated. I attended Bayside High School Health Science Academy. This is a majority Black school and yet I find I am the only Black student of two or three in my class. I am provided opportunities in the academy that I didn't... That I don't see why they can't be provided to all students at Bayside. There is a divide between the white students in the academy and the Black students that attend Bayside. For example, I recently learned white academy students refer to students that attend the school as gen pop. It should be that all students can participate in any class because all students are capable. I would like to see more Black history included in the curriculum. Education was created by the oppressor, a white man named Horace Mann. Teaching students Black history would encourage Black students and they wouldn't be so quick to doubt their capabilities and potential and white students wouldn't be so quick to judge and oppress. My three years in the Health Sciences Academy, I have learned about one Black scientist and nothing about my melanin and what my ancestors did to help form the Health Sciences field. By supporting the equity policy, you will protect Black students from racism, desegregate schools, and help to put an end to systemic racism. All lives can't matter until Black lives matter.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask, it was noted there was a speaker with an accommodation and I wanted to know.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lanetti.
Our next speaker is Naya Williams.
Welcome. Hello. My name is Naya Williams and I attend First Colonial High School in the Legal Studies Academy, which is a predominantly white school. I have encountered racism at every Virginia Beach City Public School that I have attended. I've had white students call me the N-word, teachers talk down to me, and admin asked me to move while sitting in the front of the building during lunch so I'm no longer the face of the school, all because of the color of my skin, and yet no disciplinary action has been taken. The question I want you to ask yourself is, are you going to keep allowing these students and staff to dehumanize me and other Black students? By not supporting the equity policy, you continue to allow racism to exist. Voting for the policy will ensure staff have equity training and the proper discipline enforced if they exhibit racism. I'm requesting that the change starts with you. By voting in favor of the equity policy, I will continue fighting the good fight or die trying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ruben Williams.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the father of those two Black females that just spoke and first I was asking myself, "Why am I coming out here? Why are we voting for equity? Why is that a vote?" Think about that. I had a whole lot of things to say, but after wasting 30 minutes to figure out why we're wearing masks, I got thrown off. You need to get it together, Virginia Beach, seriously. And don't ask yourself, "Why?" Don't put it to a vote, just take a look at it. Why are we voting for equity? In 2020, if you have to ask yourself, maybe father of the problem. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Susan Bates Hippen.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Hippen. I am the product of inner-city and suburban public schools in Cleveland, Shaker Heights, and Philadelphia. I attended school with students of all colors, all income brackets, political persuasions, and religious backgrounds. I would like to enlighten you why my diversity education made me a better person. I'm mixed race. One grandmother, half Cherokee, half Seminole, an undocumented grandfather from Bermuda, a Pennsylvania Dutch grandmother. I attended HBCUs before enlisting in the United States Air Force and Navy, serving 25 years and retiring as a Master Chief. My late husband was a white farm boy from Iowa. I lived overseas and all across this nation. I know what diversity looks like. When I was in sixth grade, our nation celebrated its first Earth Day. My teacher was Mr. Smith, a Black man. We learned the metric system and Black history. I learned about the Tulsa massacre or Black Wall Street long before the Watchmen TV series was recorded. In 10th and 11th grades, I attended Shaker Heights High School with a predominantly Jewish student body. We were at Shakespeare. I learned about Yom Kippur, sitting shiva, and other things in the Jewish faith. In Philadelphia, my senior year, I was at a high school with a mixed-race population that still had racial problems in 1976 and '77. You see, I lived through the civil rights struggles of the 1960s and the 1970s. I understood the climate of that school body. School had its difficult times. I was called the N-word, high yellow, Oreo, and red. And yes, I had teachers treat me differently because of my color. Virginia Beach has a diverse population, but its school system does not teach enough about diversity. It does not celebrate diversity. It does not treat students of different ethnicities equally. They do not teach students how brown, Black, red, and yellow people contributed to this country, or how they are still marginalized by this nation. Even sometimes, members of this School Board exhibit bias because of their politics, even though all of you are nonpartisan. But I'm not here to criticize. I am here to let you know that you must include diversity education for staff and students. I recently read that Virginia has a Black history curriculum, but Virginia Beach was not on the list of cities to teach it. We're not teaching Black history in the largest city in the Commonwealth? So I guess Native American, Asian, and Hispanic history just are off the table. We're the fourth-largest concentration of Filipino Americans in this nation and we're not teaching about their history. That is what marginalizes society. I have friends with mixed-race children. They're called the N-word. Nothing happens after it's reported. Teachers teach a game called underground with no accountability. My mulatto nephew was asked repeatedly on the school bus and I was one of the ones that reported it. "Are you Black? Are you white?" His white brother never had that problem.
30 seconds.
What we teach our children will stay with them throughout their lives. They will succeed or fail because of what they learn in our schools and their attitudes towards others are shaped by how they are treated by their peers, teachers, and school faculty. In closing, I'd like you to think about the students first, please. The subjects they learn, how they are treated by teachers and administrators. Please vote to include the diversity education for our teachers and staff. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Trace.
Welcome. Hi. The first time my daughter was made to feel insignificant and invalidated because of her race, it was at the hands of a Virginia Beach City Public School teacher. Brooke attended one of the highest-performing elementary schools in the district and we felt lucky, even though there were not enough students of color to even be counted as statistically relevant. My biracial child was not even going to be counted as a person in this building. Yet, it was a very good school. Everyone told us so. The class sat listening to the teacher read a story about Martin Luther King, what Dr. King wanted the white people to know and what Dr. King wanted the Black people to know. And one little girl, thinking about Brooke's Black father and white mother, raised her hand. What would Dr. King want Brooke to know? It was an excellent question. The teacher froze. What would Dr. King want to say to this child, this union of both races who had warred so vehemently during his lifetime? The teacher had such an opportunity to ignite curiosity and to start conversation and to ask them what they thought he would say. The teacher did not seize that learning opportunity. Rather, the teacher looked up and replied nervously, "That's not important," and finished the book and failed to notice the tears in my daughter's eyes. And just like that, there was a place in the world for Black people and there was a place in the world for white people. There was no place in Dr. King's world, in this teacher's world, for my daughter. She was six. First grade was as far as she got before she found out that teachers caused pain and school was not a safe place. But this incident was preventable. If my daughter's teacher had had exposure with courageous conversations, she would have developed the social-emotional tools to address that situation head-on rather than retreat from it. I know this because I have taken the course in two iterations here in Virginia Beach Public School Systems. I have engaged in that privilege walk with Virginia Beach teachers, each one of us better for the experience, not one ounce of humiliation in the room, just humility, a better understanding of each other and a more unified front across all races and ethnicities together. I have had the privilege to hear Dr. Bettina Love, a Board Member of Abolitionist Teaching, speak and I have left inspired. Abolitionist Teaching is designed to build the community and not tear it down. That truth is obvious in one of the points that one of our own School Board members highlighted in her letter to the community, calling out other teachers who are racist, homophobic, and Islamophobic. What better way to build a strong... What better way to build a strong community than to strengthen and protect the character of all of its members? As a teacher, a key part of my job is to remove obstacles that prevent growth and learning. Feeling devalued as a human being prevents growth and learning. That is why I am more than happy to be corrected by a peer, a student, anyone, if I have devalued them. It is my job to inform my peers when they have done the same. Doing so will help my students learn, and I will do what is good for my students because, because it is my job. I'm a teacher. People talk about the necessary discomfort of school shooter drills, the need for students to be trained in what to do in an emergency, and that potential mental trauma of the drill alone is worth their physical security in the long run. It is time we take our own advice. The potential mental dissonance that some teachers may feel as they grow through equity training will be worth all of our students' social, emotional, and physical safety.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maurice Hawkins.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Bryan of Virginia Beach School Board. My name is Maurice Hawkins, and I come before this august body this evening to stand in support of the Equity and Education Program that is being proposed to the Virginia Beach Public School System. When I learned that this initiative was being implemented, I can't tell you the level of joy and pride that I felt for this community that we were moving in such a dynamic direction. I was also extremely remiss when I read the document of opposition authored by Ms. Victoria Manning as it relates to this movement for equity and education. And as I read her document, as well-written as it was, the words that radiated from that document reminded me for the same rationale why people opposed Brown versus Board of Education to Pika, Kansas. When I read the words off of that document, it reminded me of the rationale for massive resistance. It reminded me for the rationale why federal troops had to escort Ruby Bridges into school. We are in the twenty-first century. Before the coronavirus infected our nation, this nation was infected with structural inequality and implicit bias. It is omnipresent in every aspect of our lives. It's in the air we breathe, the water we drink, the food we eat, how we socialize with one another. We recognize that our students, every day, are dealing with teachers from different backgrounds who may not have the cultural competency at that time to deal with some of the issues as students of different backgrounds, whether it's race, gender, religion, sexual orientation. By implementing an equity and education program, we're giving our educators the tools to work with these students and to move past their implicit bias and structural inequality so they can provide quality instruction to every student in Virginia Beach. This is a diverse community. It requires a diverse response. And when I see people, and unfortunately, the person who authored that document, for some mysterious reason, is not present here today, can write a document but can concoct a rationale why she can't stand here and hear the dissent from this community as it relates to why we deserve equity and education. This country is a diverse nation. This country was formed by diverse people. Even in so many government documents, the phrase "e pluribus unum," "out of many, one." And that same mindset exists in this community. And we have a choice as a community. We can move forward into the twenty-first century where we embrace everyone and provide an environment of education that does not discriminate and empowers our children, or we can move backwards to the twentieth century when student achievement was crippled because people held views of implicit bias and structural inequality. We must move forward together. We must implement this program as soon as possible, and it sends a clear signal throughout the United States of America
Thirty seconds.
where Virginia Beach is moving towards. Thank you for your time. I appreciate hearing my words, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Franklin.
And Madam Chairwoman, just before the next speaker, five speakers from now, we have an individual that says he can't wear a mask for medical reasons. We've coordinated with, with Ms. Linetti. We are prepared to have the hallway cleared so that he can speak if that is what the school board desires. I did not want to have you unaware when you approach the podium.
Yeah.
Here we go, medical documentation. I don't know.
Okay. So if the, the other accommodation that we can offer, if that's your decision, is we can provide him the link to be able to participate by then.
I think that's fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, who's next on the list? Um, Jennifer Franklin. Welcome.
Obviously, I'm vertically challenged. All right. Thank you, Superintendent Spence and the Honorable School Board Members. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Franklin. I wanted to speak about the inequity study that was proposed in the last school board meeting and give my opinion on that. I am an immigrant. I was born in Korea and in, in an orphanage until I was three and a half years old. I was grateful to be adopted by a wonderful, blue-collar family in rural Pennsylvania, which is also the reason I know more about sausage than kimchi. So, um, older children were not as desired in the orphanage, and if they hadn't adopted me, my life would be hugely different. I'm incredibly grateful to my adopted parents and to America for the opportunity it's given me. I grew up on a farm in an almost a hundred percent white town. There were three minority kids, myself and two African-American girls, for most of the time that I was growing up. I know what it feels like to be different from the majority. I have to say that inequity didn't just fall on us, although we were certainly easy targets of jokes. If you didn't have the right clothes, the right address, et cetera, the white kids also got made fun of, and they simply called it bullying. My very good friend is white, and grew up in the projects in Pennsylvania, and that was something that he carried with him well into adulthood. Chip on his shoulder was something that he couldn't shake because of where he was from. And he largely credits his bad decisions on one of those facts alone. He grew up in the wrong part of town. Economic inequity, I believe, is the crutch of what forces kids of any race down. Like poverty, inequity doesn't necessarily have a color. To me, it is just as much about economic class. I was lucky enough to grow up in a hard-working, middle-class family. Yes, I look different, but where I grew up, I was lucky enough to have food, shelter, and I personally worked hard for the clothes that I wanted. So while I was there, and I was made fun of for the usual racial slurs, I certainly wasn't the only one that was picked on. It didn't just come down to the color of your skin. After I tried a year in college, I made a decision to join the military, which brought me to Hampton Roads. And like many, my ex-husband and I divorced, but unfortunately, it happened after my decision to get out of the military. And so when I separated from him, I had no full-time job or money. The first, I had to borrow fifty dollars from a friend just to feed my daughter and I for the first week. I started making phone calls, and I quickly put the pieces in place to work many jobs, five in fact, dropping my daughter off at school and then washing dishes at my friend's bakery until nine went it opened. And then I went to my next job in mortgage business. I taught fitness classes, did taxes, was a Navy reservist, essentially anything I could do just to get by week by week. I certainly could have qualified to be on food stamps or welfare, but because I was too prideful at the time, I didn't want to do that. So I just worked wherever I could within my schedule to help support my daughter and I. I also volunteered in school where I could, which is where my PTSA activities started, and I developed a passion for supporting the teachers for over twenty-four years. That hard work propelled me to the kind of life that I never dreamed was possible for me, and I stand in front of you now. Why am I telling you this? Because, to me, a study didn't help me when I was struggling. If you would have asked me if I thought I needed to be a part of a study back then, I would have probably responded that a study is what educated folks think is going to solve the problem. It's not what is actually going to solve the problem. Having support from those that could lend a hand, the drive to get out there and work, and make a better life for myself are the things that changed my economic status. I also know what inequity feels like. In my opinion, talk is cheap. Studies can be long and costly, but action and support can be immediate. We need to take action to change the lives of the people that you want to have a study for. My friend Joelle and I are developing a program that we are working on to actually change lives of those that have economic and social inequity. I'm a talker, but those people that know me also know that I'm a doer. It is a waste of my breath to talk about something with no action, and it's a waste of time to have a study that doesn't have a timeframe, any goals, a budget, and outlines a costly action plan. I basically, I know a lot of great minority families, and I think they will agree that they certainly do feel the sting of true discrimination sometimes, as do I. But for the most part, we have worked hard to make great lives for our children. As a taxpayer and citizen of Virginia Beach, I would love for us to be investing time and resources on programs that, like myself, I'm putting together versus investing in just a study. I'm supportive of, of equity training, but I would appreciate if we would use those resources to do something other than just studying. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Melissa Smith.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, School Board Members. I am here in support of educational equity. I support equity because I believe in showing honor, respect, and love to each and every person is a constitutional right we are all warranted. Our society has deep-rooted systems of oppression and injustice, which are embedded in our institutions, behaviors, and mindsets. Education can disrupt the negative interpersonal and systemic influences by preparing children to resist bias and offer them opportunities to celebrate all aspects of their identities. We must nurture a more diverse and inclusive generation of young people who thrive through equitable learning experiences and build on each other's unique strengths, language, abilities, cultural backgrounds, and experiences. Education plays a key role in nurturing children's capacity for kindness, compassion, and respect while fostering equality through inclusion and racial justice. We can develop learning environments where fairness and justice are discussed and modeled, and children are supported with language to describe and understand injustice and fairness, a place where we are free to express joy and comfort with diversity. I am an anti-racist educator. I say that without reserve. Why? Because I teach students to see and respect humanity and dignity of all people. Being an anti-racist educator involves deep courageous work. We have the responsibility to show up, even when it's difficult, even when it's uncomfortable. Recently, my anti-racist stance was targeted on social media. Snapshots from my Twitter page were posted on Facebook and spread, to spread hate and disdain. My work as an educator was questioned, and racist comments were spewed throughout. Although this attack was not directly connected to my work with VBCPS, it is true educators fighting with their hearts and minds for justice often get targeted out loud and quieted behind the scenes. We need an equity policy that changes those norms and makes it normal for us to stand up for all children, including the marginalized ones. Through equity, we are liberated. We are fighting for all of our students. We are fighting for the, our, we are fighting with our whole hearts. You may not have experienced it, but there are inequities in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I have personally experienced them. My own children have personally experienced them. No longer can we normalize injustice seen, heard, and felt. We need a policy that makes these, this unacceptable on all levels. We need to be committed to providing equitable opportunities for all. We all have places we can intervene and foreclose opportunities, even if it's not your lived experience. With will, skill, knowledge, and capacity to change, I truly believe beneficial change is possible in any situation. Because some, because once someone educates you and empowers you, you should walk into conversations about equity as an accomplice. You are better able to flex your equity muscle and change systems. How will each and every one of us, you, contribute to racial justice and educational equity now? How will you contribute now
Thirty seconds.
by voting yes to the equity policy? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brooke DeWitt.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight to ask each of you to vote yes on the proposed equity policy. This policy is an important step in ensuring that Virginia Beach City Public Schools is aligned with current federal civil rights protections, protections that play an important role in providing an appropriate education to each of our students. As a school psychologist with the division, I have had the privilege to work with students across the city and in many different schools and a handful of elementary schools, high schools and elementary schools. While some schools within the, within the division are doing an incredible job working to meet equity needs, not every school has done their work. Students report racism, classism, ableism, homophobia in their learning environments. This affects their mental health. It is rare that these experiences are due to malice. More often, they are because equity and cultural competence are not focused on. That is why this is an important policy to state so directly. Last week, there was a long conversation about what is cultural competence. So today, I want to briefly share a culture that I relate to personally. One of the best parts of Virginia Beach is the number of community members who serve in our military. The military life is one of the primary cultures in this school district and one that I grew up in. It is also a culture that if you move to many places in this country, people may not understand the feelings or the needs that go along with serving our country, both service members and families. When I was much younger, I struggled to answer the question, "Where are you from?" when every new school asked. A simple question with good intentions felt confusing and overwhelming to my young mind. When a teacher understands the culture of military life, they understand why that question may not be the best way to learn about a student. As a psychologist, I have specific training in listening to people in a culturally responsive way, how to observe a behavior and monitor and control the assumptions I may make based on my own cultural background. While I do not expect a teacher to be a psychologist, many teachers want to learn how to do this better because when we know better, we do better. One of the defining features of the teachers in this school district is that they want to best serve their students. Focusing our attention on equity and responsiveness will help our teachers do better. My first year working in Virginia Beach, I signed up for the candid conversations on race. My time is limited, so I cannot provide a lot of description of the activities, but I can tell you that they made me a better practitioner. I am currently in an equity-focused book group in the professional development, and I am a better person for the learning, the conversation, and the listening that I am doing in that group. The meetings pushed me out of my comfort zone, but I wouldn't want it any other way. If we expect our students to engage with difficult content that challenges them to think better, we should be ready and willing to do the same. And the people developing these courses are doing a really fantastic job. I would sincerely recommend the ones I have attended, including to the members of the board, if that's an option. See it firsthand, experience it firsthand. It will be difficult to define and describe some of the outcomes and measures as we move through this work. Trying to define some of these concepts at this time sometimes feels like trying to pin Jello to a wall or describe the Grand Canyon. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't move forward with this policy. The change agent is the dialogue, the stories shared
Thirty seconds.
where we find greater understanding of different cultures. And each time we listen to someone's story authentically with interest and understanding, we grow and develop our capacity for empathy. This policy would help support our ability to respond to students with as much understanding as we would want for our own children. And that's the simplest reason why you should vote yes for this policy. We should all want equity in our schools. We should all want our students to be seen, heard, and understood for who they are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Louis Cortez.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. My name is Louis Cortez. I'm saying that we should not vote for the policy. We have to amend it because of the board members, there's no representation of Latin community or Asian community. After speaking to a lot of the Latinos in the community, we're the third largest in the community in the, in the statistics in schools, and we're not representing on that board for the equity policy. And we believe that if we come up with an actual true plan, not just a blanket plan, but a true plan ironed out and represented and presented to everybody, and also elect the proper person to teach that program and make it a board to actually elect it on a majority basis, not one person. And I, I think if we do that and we accommodate all the communities in the Hampton Roads area, I believe it'll be more equitable and it'll be more balanced to represent everybody. Because if you ask a lot of people out here if they know the difference between a Latin person and a Hispanic, they don't know the difference. And to us, Hispanic, that's where the word generated from, spic. And that's where it came from, from Hispanic. And there's our history, so I could email you the history on the word Hispanic and the meaning of it, how it's translated in this Latin community. meaning of it, how it's translated in this Latin community. That's all I have. I mean, just consider it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jerome Bell.
Welcome.
Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to make it known that your vote is against the governor's order and it is against the ADA, but we'll take care of that on another date. Kids are not born racist, nor do they have the concept of racism until someone tells them. Kids don't even know they are poor until someone tells them that they are poor. How do I know? Because I grew up poor in Cleveland, Ohio, until my mother and father moved us out of the ghetto into a suburb of Cleveland called Warrensville Heights. What I found was this, we were only the third black family in the neighborhood, yet all of the kids greeted me with open arms to the neighborhood. I was seven. This is what colorblind children do. This was also in the seventies. We didn't see color. We knew we played together, ran together, and some of us drank out of the same water hose because we didn't see race. Now, in 2020, we have educators and consultants.
I'm sorry, sir, excuse me.
Educators and consultants telling our kids.
Sir, we need for you to cover your nose and mouth, please.
We need, I'm reclaiming my time. Now, in 2020, we have educators and consultants telling our kids that we must get away from the colorblind thing, and we must say anti-racism and teach anti-racism practices. Also, that we must understand that our children and teachers have racial trauma. Well, I disagree. Kids are ruined by the mentally sick adults who still harbor feelings of the past and make their kids feel the same. In the medical field, they call this Munchausen syndrome by proxy. It's a mental health problem and illness. These people who wish to push the critical race theory, equity, and anti-racism linguistic programming are suffering from MSBP. To believe that all white people are racist and that black kids need to believe this too is an illness. I have three black sons that graduated from the Virginia Beach School System, and not one time have my sons ever come home and told me they felt racism or felt they were treated differently by white teachers. Matter of fact, in 2011, my black son was valedictorian of Bayside High School, where he attended the Health and Sciences Academy and had the highest GPA in Virginia Beach. And now he's an emergency room doctor practicing in Atlanta. I loathe to, I loathe to think what he may have been if his mother and I would have allowed, allowed him to think that he was less than a white kid or made excuses for a bad grade or that he didn't know that he was in control of his own destiny. In my house, everyone didn't get a trophy. You earned what you got, and you got what you earned. That was the equity we talked about. They had the same access to information and resources every other kid in Virginia Beach School had. There are no excuses, none for being black, none for being white, poor, rich, fat, skinny, boy, girl, gay, or lesbian. None. It's no one's fault if you don't succeed but you and, well, maybe your parents. However, these hired scholars and consultants want black kids to think they are less than white kids, not smart as Asian kids, and they, they are inferior because they are black. And now, we're going to demand that you white teachers acknowledge our inferiority and give us, and give us concessions to let us know that you understand our issues and it's all of your fault. So, we would change all of the rules to fit all of our black needs just because we might can't get it right. All of my sons had white teachers, and none of them were racist. None of them treated my boys any different from any other non-black child. Children did not care if their friends are black or white, they just know that they're friends. Leave it that way and leave your sickness and get help for your sickness. In closing, I am demanding that Superintendent Spence resign immediately because his leadership is very questionable and as, and as well, and abolish the Equity Council, which is not equal representation of the school population or student population in Virginia Beach. I urge the school board members to vote no on this educational equity plan before you tonight and save our children from this mental abuse. I would never apologize for being black and white people, stop being bullied into apologizing if that you're white. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joel Jones.
Welcome. Well, thank you for having me. Glad to be here. Good evening, board members. My name is Joel Jones. On behalf of the Hampton Roads Black Caucus, the HRBC, I would like to say thank you for this opportunity to speak before you.
I'm sorry, may I just ask that you keep it? Yes, thank you.
To address the concerns of the Hampton Roads Black Caucus. I'm a recently retired Navy chief. I've served almost 25 years in the United States Navy. Most of those times, been 75% overseas in places like Iraq, Afghanistan, Somalia, Japan, Korea, and other countries. I'm a husband and a father of two beautiful and talented young girls who attend Virginia Beach Public Schools. Every day, these girls wait to their father, and every day, these girls are influenced by their father, what he does and what he does not do, what he says and what he does not say. And every day, their father has to earn their respect and trust. And every day, they have to earn their father's respect and trust. I hold them accountable for their actions, and they hold me accountable for my actions. Every day, I have to continue to build equity. Let's just call it parental equity. Every day, my daughters attend schools that do not have teachers that resemble their father or their mother. Every day, this presents a concern to me because they are experiencing the same exact setup as I did as their father. This is a concern, and this deserves a courageous conversation. As a child, I attended an elementary school in Arkansas. I'm the oldest of 15 children. I was told by an old white teacher that I could only be a construction laborer when I simply wanted to be a salesman for Century 21. Imagine that. I didn't understand why she would say that. We would have movie days, and I saw the movie, and for the first time, I saw the Sidney Opera House. And I was just so excited about it, and with enthusiasm, I shared it with my classmates, and I was going to see that place one day. That same teacher, she told me that I would never be able to go there because I was not allowed to. That same teacher held me back in first grade, even though I was the only student to finish all my class workbooks ahead of everyone else. So even then, someone should have had those courageous conversations. And the HRBC is concerned that your initiatives to promote educational equity is one that is all-inclusive. All-inclusive meaning your actions to foster a barrier-free environment for learning is implemented with the mindset of removing cultural bias and gaining cultural equity in learning by understanding the cultural diversity of the students. How is cultural equity earned? Well, by understanding the different methods to engage students in instructional delivery methods, by understanding how students from different cultures respond to teachers of different races. What gender of person do these students respond to best? And what race of person do they respond to better? Taking into consideration the different cultural norms of every person, of every student is of great importance. And HRBC is concerned that due to a lack of cultural understanding by those who deliver educational instructions to our diverse culture of students, in particular, minority, black, Asian, Hispanic, and Latino students, their teachers are making our students feel marginalized. So HRBC understands that cultural bias exists within everyone. And every culture is simply due to our own prejudice. We all have them. So the HRBC asked the board to consider this question, how best do we successfully remove these barriers that will improve cultural comprehension and education? So despite the lack of courageous conversation, I'm going to shorten mine, I succeeded in becoming a builder for the Navy. The Navy helped me accomplish the visit at Sidney Opera House with my, my brother in 2007. In 2008, I graduated from Navy Sales Orientation School, became the top recruiter.
And that is time.
In 2019, I graduated my grad school, all right?
That is time.
So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You can email us any remaining thoughts. Thank you. Our next speaker is Rona Marsh.
Welcome.
School board members, you got an email from me at about 3 o'clock today, and I tried to alert you to something I've noticed, that we do not apparently have any Latinos or Asians on the Equity Council. People have been asking me, who appointed the people to the Equity Council? I truly don't know, but when I look at the race of the Equity Council that was put out by Jerome Bell, and he ran for Congress, so I have to think that he is approximate in it, and I've actually FOIA'd it and requested it from Mr. Sutton, it appears to me that we have 15 people on the Equity Council that are black. That represents 75% of the Equity Council. Why are we excluding Latinos and Asians? I sent you the names of four people who would like to be on the Equity Council. Mr. Avilo, Ms. Zaragoza, Mr. Cortez, Ms. Hoff, and I spoke to Jennifer Franklin as she was leaving tonight. She would also like to be on the Equity Council. That would add five people to the Equity Council who have Latino and Asian background. Why don't you get this right? Rather than pushing something through that has no equity representation for Latinos or Asians? And one of our speakers here earlier today said that the Filipino community is one of the largest in the country here in Virginia Beach. Not a single Filipino on the Equity Council. So I have to bring up courageous conversations because that's what everybody's talked about. And this is what racism is. If you look at Mr. Singleton, he says that racism is any act that even unwittingly tolerates, accepts, or reinforces racially unequal opportunities or outcomes. So are all of you who voted for this tonight, if you don't postpone it, are you racist? Look in the mirror. You're doing this, you're knowing that you don't have an equal proportional number of people on this council for the Equity Council that represent our citizens that we have in Virginia Beach. We have a citizen makeup in Virginia Beach that is known to be about 60% white, 18% black or African, 6.5% Asian, and about 8% Hispanic. I'm even willing for it to be an equal split of 5-5-5. It doesn't have to be all one race, but to lopsided exclusively 75% to blacks makes me wonder what Ms. Felton and what Ms. Owens and what Ms. Parrot were thinking. Did they think no one would notice that they have loaded the council up with primarily black people? And how does that create equity? Is it reverse discrimination? I don't know. But again, Mr. Courageous Conversations calls privilege a right or advantage that is given to some people and not others. I think we have here an Equity Council that was created, and I don't know who created it, if it was our board chair or who, but this privilege really smacks of discrimination. And you all need to look in the mirror as you decide to vote on this.
Thirty seconds.
I think you should consider voting after it's amended to have a fair number of people proportional to our city. I would also say, on the matter of reducing the amount of time for speakers, which is coming up, you should really consider, we pay a billion dollars in taxes to run this school district. If you can't let us have four minutes at the podium, something is very wrong with our school district. You must not want to hear from us. So I would say, Dr. Spence and everyone on the board.
And that is time.
Four minutes should be the minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Russell Perez Gatling.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Perez Gatling. I worked in Virginia Beach as an assistant principal at Renaissance Academy for four years. I was an assistant principal at Lynn Haven Middle for a year. I was an employee relations specialist for a year, and I was a, an assistant principal at Ocean Lakes High School for two years. Equity must be a priority for Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and it must be the cornerstone of the work in which this body, this school board, must engage. Although there has been progress in some of the division's indicators and achievements, there are still opportunity gaps that exist. While we are thankful that the school division has begun to address the inequitable representation of black students in gifted programs, there is still much work to do as it relates to decreasing the over-identification and the over-representation of black students in special education, recruiting, hiring, supporting, and retaining black teachers and administrators, supporting and not ostracizing the current black students and employees, and many other areas. Many of these issues have been examined and are being examined by senior leadership in the board, but it's time for resolution. You must approach equity with urgency so that all children can realize the promise that lives in public education as opposed to the promise that lies in public education. You must approach equity with urgency so that all staff members feel important, included, and invested in the most honorable profession in the world. Good intentions and kindness are not enough. Good, good intentions did not get any of us where we are today. The current reality is that there are some people with good intentions, and there are some kind people who don't, don't know how to identify and relate to black and brown students if they're not completely assimilated. There are people who are kind and have good intentions who don't know how to relate to black and brown staff members if they are not completely assimilated. There are schools in the beach with principals advisory committees comprised of students that have no black students, or at the very least, no black males. I'm certain their intentions are good. I accompanied our former, former chief of staff to a Teachers for Tomorrow classroom when I was an assistant principal, and he was there to serve as the guest speaker. In her introduction, the white female teacher referred to him and introduced him unapologetically as Dr. Spence's little buddy in front of her class. And I'm certain her intentions were good. I've been in conferences with school counselors who've said to black students, oh, you may not be able to get into UBA or Virginia Tech, but you can settle for Norfolk State. The school division has no room for systematic arrogance. This equity policy will help us to operationalize what it means to be an equitable school division. Equity is not another thing, it is the thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Scott Hoaded, emailed and canceled, so our next speaker will be Chris Just.
Welcome.
Good evening, school board. Appreciate the time. I know there's a lot of speakers. Want to say, I've been listening in on Zoom to all the speakers, and I appreciate the passion that everyone's bringing. And I think this board is assembled because you are all passionate, whatever your positions might be, about doing the best thing to ensure the best outcomes for all the students that go here. One of the things I'm real concerned about has been voiced by a couple of folks. It sounds, I know you all have been working on this education equity policy for a while. It seems to the public like it just popped up. This is an important enough opportunity that you can, you can bridge a lot of the divisions that everybody's feeling right now all across America, not just Virginia Beach. Slow down on this, bring in genuine diverse voices, um, thought, skin color, gender, you name it. Bring in a council of genuine diversity and try to take this a little bit slower and a little bit more piecemeal. I don't think anybody here disagrees with the stories you've heard tonight about problems and incidents that have occurred within the Virginia Beach City Public School System. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. I don't think there's a person here that doesn't want to address those so that those don't occur anymore. We can do this the right way, in a way that doesn't create more division. There are a lot of folks that are pushing back on the equity, educational equity policy, but it is from a place of love, okay? It is not from a place of being racist, it is from a place of trying to do the best for everybody. If you all slow down a little bit, do this with a genuine diversified mentality and thought process and group of people, do the assessment after that, after that group has come together and everybody's agreed upon it. And let's do something that nobody feels is coming from a political place or from a place that's racist or from a place that's, you know, in any way, shape, or form debatable. This is not really a debatable topic. We want the best for the kids. Please slow down and do this the right way. Bring Virginia Beach together, do an assessment first, and then take steps coming out of that, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Crystal Felton.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Chair Rye, Vice Chair Meckley, and school board members. As a parent of two Virginia Beach students and an educator, I am here to address how I believe that schools need to approach equity issues with a growth mindset. Attitudes can influence education. Most teachers would agree that a student's attitude towards his studies will influence his engagement. his engagement and ultimately his academic outcome. In fact, fostering a growth mindset in students can have a positive effect on a student's accomplishments and even counteract the effects of poverty and social and systemic issues as well as a disability or an impairment. Students, however, are not the only stakeholders that need to have a growth mindset, and educator's mindset is important as well. Teachers can sometimes express a subtle bias in dealing with students whose race, background, or belief system is different from their own, and as a result, may be unaware of these attitudes or the way they are affecting the classroom. Those are called our blind spots, our lack of awareness or conscious control that shape our likes and dislikes and our judgments about people's character, abilities, and potential, which can have a tremendous impact on a student's learning. Now, I would like to spend a few minutes sharing my views based on Mrs. Manning's reactions to the proposed equity policy. First, in Mrs. Manning's viewpoint, she publicly shared and stated that this new equity policy was developed without transparency, citing several vital steps that were missed, such as not all stakeholder groups from all communities were involved in creating the policy. My question to the board is, when have all stakeholders ever truly been involved in all decision-made top-down policies and practices that have been implemented? If your records can show that past policies have been inclusive of all VB citizens, then Ms. Manning's claims of not following protocol might be valid. Secondly, a great deal of cherry picking was involved in discrediting the research, teachings, and professional development provided by Glenn Singleton. Using one example out of context that was used to challenge teachers to think about the world critically and their place in it is unacceptable and reckless. You visibly ignored the overall goals and aims of this PD training exercise. If you are really concerned about the success of all students, let's address how schools can close these achievement gaps and ensure equity is always at the forefront instead of sabotaging a powerful exercise. I would like to believe you when you claim not to be opposed to any equity policy for VB schools, but perhaps you are opposed to an equity policy with teeth and one that will challenge teachers and your own attitudes, beliefs, values, and practices that can go unchecked if not examined and evaluated from time to time. If you truly believe that diversity-
Thirty seconds.
-and the right to all VB citizens to be educated in an environment where they matter and they feel like they belong, then your opposition to this national model would not be so strong. Aren't educators in the business of developing competent and compassionate 21st century learners? Equity issues must be approached with a growth mindset. This mindset will allow all educators to examine not only a student's academic data points or their zip code, but it also affords educators the opportunity-
And that is time.
...to inspect their own unintentional blind spot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is April Blanc.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm speaking on Agenda Item of Equity Policy for vote and demand date tonight. I may be going out on a limb here, but I ask that tonight's vote be deferred and no further advances of this policy be implemented until it is made transparent to educators and parents who hold right to be informed of their school division's mission directives, training methods, and educational philosophies. Many board members admit they have not read in entirety this policy and still have unanswered questions due to its vague, open-for interpretation wording, nothing more than nuances given, catchy acronyms that when injected into conversation sound on the surface to fall in line with a wholesome, data-based, educational approach that meet all goals our school board has set for itself of being specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound, with pending approval for the acronyms inclusive and equitable, which has now been changed without proper notice to parents suddenly to a compass to strategic framework of goals that some believe directly line with critical race theory, which have definitively been found to actually hurt the children it's thought to help. Policies relating to Virginia Beach City Public School model of educating should not be qualitative phenomena observed, but by measured, but measured. We want fact-based education that respects the fundamental rights of every child regardless of their skin color, which critical race theories do not accept. What is white? And should children be led to believe that a single race created racism and racial inequalities to maintain elite white interests in labor markets and politics, which in turn give rise to the poverty and criminality in many minority communities, furthering the gap of division? It's presented as bridging. That's been compiled by a uniform DEI and static Equity Council comprised of nearly all one race, nonreflective of the division's demographic as a whole versus an assertive roundtable inclusive of every ethical or cultural background. Let's have common sense. The majority of the public is unaware of this equity policy's bureaucratic mandates being enacted. allocations of resources proposed by equity policy are readily made available through departments of public service, social work, and private mental health professionals. Encompassed in policy are training and teachings regarding personal core values and family belief systems, which should require permissive approval by parents, instead have been reworded to appear "good," as if there's nothing to see here, folks. I ask that my biracial daughter not be robbed of her innocence by critical race theory's delusion that she should see differences in color where she has never before via her newly-created Virginia Studies course and beyond, when I've already done my job of raising her to judge only by content of one character, including her own. The matter of equity is a diversity issue, not a race issue.
Thirty seconds.
So let's, thank you, so let's not make it one, especially during times of such social unrest. Virginia is looked to as a pioneer in leadership, which comes with great responsibility and the power, and power that shouldn't be diluted or taken lightly. Your vote holds extreme power, as do the people's on November 3rd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Angela Allison Davis.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Angela Allison Davis, and I am the Vice President of the Hampton Rose Black Caucus. I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the Virginia Beach City School Division Diversity Policy to gain educational equity. At the Virginia Beach Public School Board meeting on August 25th, 2020, the school board reviewed the future educational equity policy that reflects the board's education to developing a capacity for cultural proficiency and a commitment to equity and inclusion for all students, staff, and future generation. The policy came at the request of many citizens in the City of Virginia Beach community and the school board members, Ms. Sharon Felton, Ms. Jessica Owens, and was spearheaded by Dr. Lakish Parrot. The draft as presented by Dr. Parrot is a collective effort of the Virginia Beach Public School Equity Council member, which includes our community and fervent division staff and students. The individuals putting forth this policy will forever be remembered by all our students and committee and community and history for which shoulders they stand on. In this newly-proposed policy, the school board would commit to support the superintendent in adopting processes, practices, and initiatives to ensure an equitable school community inclusive of diversity, race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity. The policy also addresses pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, age, marital status, disability, or genetic information. In essence, this policy assists all students in facing demanding challenges of the future head-on with courage of conviction and high sense of professional pride. As Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, quote, "Perhaps I must turn my faith to the inner spiritual church, the church within the church, as the true ecclesia and the hope of the world. But again, I'm thankful to God that some noble souls from the ranks of organized religion have broken loose from the paralyzing chains of conformity and joined us as an active partner in the struggle for freedom," unquote. Some school members would tell the community, "Wait." However, how long should our students and community wait for diversity, equity, and inclusion? Our students are more invaluable, are an invaluable asset to the City of Virginia community. They deserve better than what is being given to them. All of our students warrant diversity, equity, and inclusion within the school division. Hampton Rose Black Caucus applaud this policy and extend to Virginia Beach Public School Division our personal well-done. And as a parent who has children at the Virginia Beach Public School, I want to say thank you for voting yes and moving forward with this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey McDaniel.
Good evening, board members. I represent Hampton Rose Black Caucus. I'm one of the board members. I thank you for your continued commitment to the students and the teachers. This policy supports a judge-free zone for the educator and the student within the school division. No longer will a zip code, race, culture, or all the other things that make us different affect the type of education that one would receive. Students will be equipped to face differences with compassion and understanding. The school board, I thank you again for valuing the students and the teachers and the importance of diversity and inclusion and opening up a conversation. When you vote, please don't vote because it's a black thing. Vote because there's so many different diverse. You have the students who are pregnant. You have the students who decided 12 years old they want to wear a dress to school, and because of that, they have to go to Renaissance or some alternative school. Please vote because it's the thing to do. Equality is important, and we want to make, this is where they spend most of their time. Most people spend their whole lives being educated, and this is the foundation. And we want to make them better citizens and better equipped to go into whatever world they decide to go into with, again, with understanding and compassion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Don Schultz.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Donald Schultz. Have two young sons in high school in Virginia Beach. Good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I think what the question comes down to about this policy is equality of opportunity or equality of result. The former has been achieved in this country at great expense in terms of treasure, in terms of life and limb. The latter does not exist in this world, nor should it. It never has and it never will. We are imperfect beings. Quality of opportunity is a noble goal. It is a noble achievement. Quality of opportunity, if that can be achieved, if that can be secured, would be something quite amazing. We're not there yet. Equality of result is seemingly what this critical race theory is about. The definition in Britannica, which is now online, nobody's walking door-to-door selling it anymore, is defined thusly, "Critical race theory is the view that the law and legal institutions are inherently racist and that race itself, instead of being biologically grounded and natural, is a socially constructed concept that is used by white people to further their economic and political interests at the expense of people of color. According to critical race theory, racial inequality emerges from the social, economic, and legal differences that white people create between, in quotes, 'races,' to maintain elite white interests in labor markets and politics, giving rise, giving rise, to poverty and criminality in many minority communities." My understanding, having read through the equity policy, and I would point you to Section B, Paragraph 3, "Strict equality of opportunity and resources between the students may not result in educational equity. Therefore, review and deliberative decision-making regarding equitable practices and allocation of resources may be needed to achieve the school boards and the school division's goals of educational equity." Well, I may not be a wise man, but that says to me that quality of result regardless of the cost. I don't think that's a choice that this board can make in good conscience. I don't think it's a choice that this country should make in good conscience. I was reading before I came to speak a book that informs my views quite significantly on race and education. It's called Simple Justice, written by Richard Kluger, and it's one of the seminal works on Brown v. Board of Education. It's a fascinating book.
Thirty seconds.
Having read that book and seeing what I see now here, Thurgood Marshall, Oliver Hill, and the giants of the civil rights movement, they wouldn't know what to make of this. I urge you to reconsider this equity policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keenan Tyler.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Keenan Tyler. I'm the pastor of Coastal Shore Seventh-day Adventist Church. I'm here in Virginia Beach. Thank you all for your time. I just want to say to all of you that four months ago, as you know, what happened with George Floyd, that was a tragedy. Awful, awful what took place. But that can be a catalyst for change. And that exposed, in the midst of a health pandemic, what happened to George Floyd exposed another pandemic, the pandemic of racism, bigotry, and white supremacy. And there's only one thing that we can do, because that's a heart problem. As a pastor, that's a sin problem, right? And there's only one thing that could fix a heart problem, only one thing that can fix a sin problem, and that's repent. And we have to turn to God. We have to change our ways. We have to turn away from sin. We have to turn away from oppression and do the right thing. And Jesus said that the greatest commandment of all is to love God with all your heart, mind, body, and soul. And the second commandment is likewise, to love thy neighbor as thyself. In Romans, Paul said that God is no respecter of persons. And the equity plan, it points to that. It points to tune everybody on a fair basis. So I wanted just to say that first. Now, I'm going to read a letter from the African-American Round Table in one minute. Dear Virginia Beach School Board, At the Virginia Beach City Public School Board meeting on August 25th, 2020, the school board reviewed the future educational equity policy that reflects the board's dedication to developing a capacity for cultural proficiency and a commitment to equity and inclusion for all students, staff, and future generations. The policy came at the request of school board members Ms. Sharon Felton and Ms. Jessica Owens and was spearheaded by Dr. Parrot. The draft as presented by Dr. Parrot is a collective effort of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Equity Council members, which include our community and fervent division staff and students. In its newly-proposed policy, the school board will commit to support the superintendent in adopting processes, practices, and initiatives to ensure an equitable school community inclusive of diversity, race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity. The policy also addresses pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions, age, marital status, disability, or genetic information. As projected, the policy also mandates guidance for all school board members and school staff regarding hidden bias and how it produces discriminatory practices and outcomes. We thank the school board and the administration of Virginia Beach City Public Schools for their efforts to help ensure equity for all students and staff and support the adoption of this educational equity policy. We also want to express our appreciation of the education of Dr. Parrot and school board members. This reflects great credit upon Virginia Beach Public Schools' division staff and board members and- board members in keeping with the highest tradition in public school education. We thank God for your commitment to equity and inclusion. Very respectfully, the African-American Leadership Roundtable members. So let's make sure we do the right thing and vote yes to this policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker, Tim Worst, did email to cancel, so our next speaker will be Pamela Durham.
Good evening.
Welcome, welcome.
Good evening. I am Pamela Durham, a 35-year resident of Virginia Beach. I am a mother and a grandmother of four. Two of my grandchildren are biracial. And one's a Navy SEAL, one's a military policeman, one's a senior in college, graduating to universities next year with a summa cum laude. And the little young thing in high school, senior, is doing an internship for VCU Engineering. My son is a junior ROTC officer and teacher. The two youngest are being brainwashed enough already. We do not need divisive equity policy implemented, especially with an open check. Our children are increasingly being put in a pigeonhole. And if this policy is affirmed, it will get worse. All will think that there is something wrong with them and they will become more insecure. Our children are not little minions. Each one has a unique personality. They should be flourishing. Doctrine that is being taught is dumbing down our children who will no longer think for themselves. I found the content of this policy to be repetitive, ambiguous, resulting in negative doctrine. I have been fortunate to grow up with family, schoolteachers, to a university president. All of their students were taught to stand on their own merit, encouraged to reach their potential, and who actually learned something valuable, not how to protest, riot, disrespect our country, and not learn history. From the day we are born, we are sponges. The problem is the curriculum promoting unrest, et cetera, is not what we should be soaking up. We have talented teachers, so let them teach good curriculum, not brainwash. My son, during his Army career, told me he and others were apolitical until they went to the ballot box. Teachers should follow this philosophy and not indoctrinate their belief or system belief. Glenn Singleton's book is clearly promoting propaganda, and I find it to be demeaning, and this protocol should be removed immediately. Anyone who supports Trump is a xenophobe. Well, I stand here before you to tell you I am not racist and I resent it. How can you say a problem exists when it does not? This policy is divisive. It is clear this is not the direction of our students and parents want to go. Force-feeding is not an option. This is not California. Vote against the equity policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Stewart.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm fogging up my glasses with this here. I'm here to talk about a new educational equity policy for Virginia Beach Public Schools that's being proposed, that will mandate training for all teachers and staff related to the topic of cultural responsiveness and bias. It gives the school superintendent complete discretion, basically a blank check to hire outside consultants to implement these programs and conduct audits without requiring a competitive bidding process or approval from the school board. It also appears that all community groups in Virginia Beach were not involved in creating the policy. How was it determined that this policy needed to be implemented? What is the budget? As most teachers, staff, and children in our public school system are not racist. Proposed training or training currently being used or implemented in Virginia Beach Public Schools is Courageous Conversations About Race by Glenn E. Singleton. Project Implicit: Goal of Assessment to Educate the Public About Hidden Biases and Provide a Virtual Laboratory for Collecting Data Online. Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain by Zaretta Hammond. Counter-Narrative or Counterstory About Racial Imagination to Reshape Society and Create a New Normal: Hands Up by Brianna McDaniel. This is not the job of the public school system, but it is a great distraction from the failure of some of our students, as a matter of fact, a lot of our students, in their math, science, reading. How the U.S. compares on science, math, and reading scores according to Pew Research and the Program for International Student Assessment. Out of only 71 countries, the U.S. ranks 38th in math, 24th in science, and 25th in reading. The American Association for the Advancement of Science found that just 16% of scientists called the U.S. K-12 STEM education the best or above average, and almost 50%, 46% called the K-12 STEM education below average. Among 35-member countries of the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, the U.S. ranked 30th in math out of 35-member countries and only 19th in science. But we spend the most money per pupil out of the top 10 largest school districts according to the U.S. Department of Commerce, New York City being the top one, almost a million students. We spend $25,199 per pupil. In Fairfax County, Virginia, we spend $14,498 per pupil. According to the Department of Education, some 30 million adults in the U.S. do not have the skills to perform even the most basic tasks such as searching a simple text to find out what a patient is allowed to drink before a medical test. 14% are below basic and only 13%.
Thirty seconds.
I certainly hope you have established a legal defense fund for the harm that may be caused by this policy. Has any program implemented to the detriment of one group based on their race is subject to review and prosecution under the Civil Rights Division of the U.S. Department of Justice? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Frances Knight Thompson.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Carolyn Rye, Superintendent Dr. Spence, and to all of the distinguished members of the Virginia Beach School Board, good evening. I am Frances Knight Thompson, and I stand before you this evening to endorse and fully support the efforts of the school district to set forth an equity policy to ensure that teachers and administrators respond to the academic needs of all students, regardless of race, socioeconomic status, or any other factors they may indicate and identifyable need. I am a retired educator with Virginia Beach City Public Schools after more than 40 years of service, and am also a former candidate for the Virginia Beach School Board in 2014 and 2016. During my years employed by the school district, I became committed to providing educational equity for all students after experiencing and hearing the stories of students, parents, and teachers across the district who felt marginalized and who felt that cultural competency was lacking in classrooms across the city. The issues of equity and cultural competency were integral on my campaign agenda. Although I did not have success as a school board candidate, as a career educator, I remain committed to those principles as we see another generation of students being prepared to enter the world as productive citizens. I am aware of Board Member Victoria Manning's reservations and her disdain regarding the proposed equity policy, citing her concern for specific strategies that were used during professional learning experiences all the way back to 2008 through 2015. Courageous Conversations About Race was just one of the many strategies developed during the execution of a strategic objective within the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Strategic Plan encompassed to 2015. It was used to address the racial achievement disparities that data revealed in 2008, and unfortunately, racial achievement and discipline disparities even now continue to be a concern both locally and nationally. It is this strategy that she refers to in her blog posted on her website. At that time, these conversations were facilitated by school employees and not by Glenn Singleton, the author and creator. I, along with many other Virginia Beach City Public Schools colleagues, facilitated candid conversations about race, or CCR, across the city schools and administrative spaces with much success and with the total support of the previous superintendents, Dr. James Merrill and Dr. Sheila Magula, interim superintendent. Specifically, Dr. Magula saw the need, appreciated our efforts, and reminded us that equity in every classroom for every student was, quote, "a moral imperative." This is crucial. As a school district, we have the opportunity to provide the very best academic preparation for all students. I fully support and I encourage you to support this policy that will bring cultural awareness, equity, and social justice to and for.
Thirty seconds.
All students, teachers, and staff. This is a new generation of learners who have experienced loss and grief in 2020 like none have ever before. We owe them our best, I'm convinced of that. Regardless of how uncomfortable we may feel and find this work to be as adults, we must keep our minds and hearts focused on the needs of all of our students and staff. Thank you in advance for your thoughtful consideration. I respectfully ask that you vote to adopt this policy this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daphne Stagg.
Hello, my name is Daphne Stagg.
Welcome.
And I'm here to ask you to not pass the racist agenda in our school system. I raised both of my children in the VB school system and am appalled at the progressive direction it has taken. As far as the drafted equity policy goes, it appears that this is affirmative, affirmative action, including elementary school. You want the current VB demographics to be mirrored in the gifted program? So that would mean 19% of the black children. I don't have a problem with that, but if they don't qualify and someone of another color does, are you prepared to ensure, like sports teams, basketball, football, also all these demographics of only 19% participation? With sports merit in the form of ability and talent is what gets you on the team. Why would any other program be different? It's absurd. And not only that, the Equity Council does not mirror our community demographics. That's hypocrisy. With only two white people, and so how is there a healthy debate with all races not being involved at the community levels? Excuse me. I need air.
Take your time.
We should be teaching the kids that all men are created equal. We have different socioeconomic starts in life, but this is not contingent to race. We all have different gifts and talents, and you can't force a round peg in a square hole. Trying to do that sets our kids up for failure. The policies that are being pushed to the forefront of this issue are an offshoot from the critical race theory. In this theory, I, I think a lot of people are missing this fact. Let's see, the policies that are being pushed forward of this issue are an offshoot from the critical race theory. This theory claims white people are racist, even while being anti-racist, and that we should actively look for racism in every situation, which is actually a power struggle. It's garbage. Practicing this theory will set our race relations in this country back 100 years. This radical theory is taking hold while parents are distracted with riots, the coronavirus, and getting kids back to school. The school board is exploiting the current situation to push this radical garbage agenda, creating hate and division in our schools. So we can teach our kids of color to love and respect themselves, just like white people.
Thirty seconds.
Well, let's say if there's a greater number of minorities who qualify for one of the schools, are they not going to be allowed because the color of their skin, because the quota was met? That's what I want to know. And I have a message from a teacher. This is not working for the parents, the students, or the teachers. Students are in daycares.
And that is time.
With providers who have to care what they're doing, who have no clue what they're doing. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carrington Smith.
Welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Carrington Smith, and I am a junior at Kempsville High School, and I'm enrolled in the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy. Also, I am an active member and actually the president of the First Black Student Union, which was in the, which is the first in the Virginia Beach Public Schools system. I was given the opportunity to learn about the equity policy through a previous meeting held here by Dr. Parrott and was able to come and collaborate with a variety of students in Virginia Beach, and I came to this conclusion. And by the way, I would also like to point out that this meeting was before everything that happened with George Floyd. Therefore, it is not causing hate in our school systems. And the Virginia, in the Virginia Beach City Public School mission statement states that in partnership with the entire community, we empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within our global community. And being a part of the school board means that you are being held accountable for decisions you make on behalf of approximately 70,000 students in our community. Within the thousands of children being taught in our school systems every day, each and every one of them have a mind and body of their own, meaning that they learn at different paces and they have all different backgrounds. And as people that live in their community, we have to take account that all of us are different. And that does not give us the right to withhold education opportunities in real-life situations from us students. And this should not happen due to one's preference. It should be for the community. And it should be, and if your, if your mission states that you empower students to be a long-life learner, then no one should have the right to take away knowledge from students that they need to learn in the real world. These days, equality, strength is little to none, but equity is a strong force that not only brings the community together, but makes it better for those in the future. So as educators, it is asked that you have the narrative of equity when it comes to empowering students and making sure that they are productive as possible, which is stated in your mission statement. And if we aren't condoning equity to our schools, then how are we sure that in the future, your mission statement holds its merits to attempt to make the ideal of a lifelong learner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Owens.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Brian Owens. I was a Virginia Beach Public School student. I worked in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I've been a member of the PTA. I've been a mentor in several Virginia Beach Public Schools. And also, my sister is Jessica Owens, who was on this board and the council, the Equity Council. I've heard a lot of people come up today and say that there is no Hispanic representation on the Equity Council. Our Puerto Rican mother will be shocked to hear that. The Equity Policy is a commitment to have an audit of all of our processes, from the hiring to special education process, gifted process, disciplinary. Seems so basic, an audit, an inspection. How can we be against this? I know what it's like to be the black kid in a gifted elementary class. I know what it's like to be the only Puerto Rican student at a lunch table in Virginia Beach and have a table full of students who have no idea that Puerto Ricans are American citizens. Cultural competence is not a threat. Cultural competence is education. I know what it's like to be the only black man at a school that the students call teacher, even at a school with a significant minority population. I think that deserves an audit. Our current process is clearly not attracting and retaining minority staff members. Our process deserves a second look. I've heard a lot of argument about whether or not racism, sexism, ableism, and inequity exist in Virginia Beach Public School System. I'm not going to try to convince you either way. Actually, in my opinion, it's not very important to this conversation. You don't have to believe sexism exists to make this commitment that our little boys and little girls in Virginia Beach deserve equity. You don't have to believe that racism exists in the school system to make this commitment to cultural competency. You don't have to believe ableism exists to make this commitment that Virginia Beach students, regardless of their abilities, deserve fairness. Voting yes on this policy is not an admission of guilt of terrible things. It's a commitment against terrible things. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Frolich.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. First thing I want to do is say, I'm here, I don't even believe we should be voting at this point in time. As a school system, this is very important. It's obvious. I mean, I've listened to a lot of, a lot of very interesting stories and, you know, people, people, people relaying their experiences from being a student in Virginia Beach Schools or living in the city of Virginia Beach. But we really, at this point in time, I do not believe we should be voting on this. We should take this, it is something we really need to consider and be serious about, but push it off. We have other issues right now, such as opening the school system up and making it run proper in a way that we've never had to do before in a virtual learning experience. We have, we should, parents should be more worried than the faculty and the administration about, is the chemistry teacher doing his job? Is he staying on the Zoom call the required amount of time educating the children? Or is he just giving a fifteen-minute lecture and moving on to an assignment? That's really what we should be worried about now. Take this, push it back a little bit, let the world settle down. It's the most emotional time I have ever experienced in my life. We have the election, we have protests, we have riots, we have COVID, we have all these different items that are taking place right now. This is an important issue, but we just need to be looking at it and getting feedback if, from everybody at the right time. Let's worry about what's most important, which is getting these kids in school, getting them back to school. And as we learned tonight, we aren't even prepared to get them back to school per the guidelines that were, that were established by the school board, if I read the article in the Virginia Pilot correctly. We should be focusing on that before we, before we focus on another important issue such as this. As for reducing the amount of time people can talk, that one also, I've sat here tonight, I sat in my car, I watched, instead of reducing the time, we should be embracing the fact that you have this many people who care about the school system. There are probably many school systems, I wish I'd had time to research, like in a, in a failing school system, how many people show up to their school board meetings? So instead of sitting there and saying, gosh, we can only let people talk for three minutes, we should be embracing that because that's what we're supposed to be doing. So I just, I really, I hope that you defer this, then you do it, you step back, take a serious, you know, I just learned tonight, there weren't, I guess Hispanic people involved and Filipino people involved, if I heard correct, I might be off. But get everybody involved and develop a policy that works for everybody. We're so emotional, anyone that runs an organization knows that when you make a decision based upon emotion or reactions, it's never the best decision. Get through everything, then look at and make a decision that's going to be in place for the next ten, twenty, thirty years, whatever it may be. So I ask that you defer that and you also keep the time at four minutes. The Virginia Beach citizens deserve the right to voice their opinion to their elected officials. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andy Ban.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. As a member of the public concerned with the education we are providing, and as a parent concerned with the education we are providing, I respectfully request your deeper involvement in the equity issue. William F. Buckley said he'd rather be governed by the first hundred names in the phone book than by experts. And that's where you come in. The effort to eliminate inequities is a noble one. It turns, I'm a Catholic guy and it turns out that today is the feast of Saint Peter Claver, who gave his life to fight against slavery. One of the, one of his bios describes him as, "After the slaves were herded out of the ship like chained animals and shut up in nearby yards to be gazed at by crowds, Claver plunged in among them with medicines, food, brandy, lemons, and tobacco. With the help of interpreters, he gave basic instructions and assured his brothers and sisters of their human dignity and God's love." And isn't that what we're really all about, is dignity and love? So I'm in favor of the equity proposal, or in favor of conducting equity education and eliminating inequities. But I ask that you be involved. We, it's so charged, you, I'm sure you feel it. It's so charged now that it, I think it requires a political remedy. What program are we talking about? We've heard on the internet wild things about what could be or what is going on. Tonight, we've heard all kinds of voices talking about what could be and to ensure love and dignity for all. I think the public needs to buy in. And so I ask that before programs are started, you meet and you discuss what they are and you direct them. I understand that it'd be easier to defer to others, to experts. Congress does that, but I would suggest that's the wrong model. You, by making the decision about what should happen in this charged environment, should be the model for them. I just did a training for, through my church, church is important to me, I just did a training and it began with, "All white people are racists. We're never going to achieve love, dignity, respect, and harmony after that. Nobody's going to listen." So the public would benefit from this board's guidance on what program should be used. So I ask, delete ongoing implementation, delete incorporating changes based on assessments and review prior to reports. You should get those reports and then you should decide, not somebody else. Insert following the direction of the school board between superintendent and through the director. Under curriculum instruction, I ask you to notify parents in advance in the school, at the beginning of the school year, to tell them about changes that might be occurring, be occurring and that the examination is ongoing about bias and that they'll be told about those things. I ask this because this is such an important topic, especially
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. That the choice of the program should be a public one, publicly made by the people's representatives. The public would, should comment, the representative, you, the representative should direct, and as a result, the public will buy in and support the actions that will be taken. Because a man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still. And that's not love or dignity, I think. So
And that is time.
Please, please take it upon yourself. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anne Marie Savino. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Spence. I'm Anne Marie Savino, a biracial mother, born and raised in Sub-Saharan Africa and well-versed in racial and cultural issues. I am also a former Virginia Beach City Public Schools teacher, and I'm here this evening representing the voices of many other parents in our community. Indeed, there is a petition signed by two hundred and seventy parents and members of the public to request that the school board defer a vote on the equity policy for several reasons. Upon closer scrutiny of the equity policy that is being proposed, we believe that there are too many unanswered questions. Parents and the tax-paying public have not been made adequately aware of what this equity policy actually entails. The information presented in the equity policy is very vague and does not address specific questions we have with regards to its goals, scope, design, and selection of supporting materials and training on the topic of educational equity and the strategy of its implementation in our schools. On the meeting of August 25th, Dr. Spence mentioned that the very controversial courageous conversations, a racial sensitivity training program has already been introduced to train teachers and staff. With the current civil unrest and discussions which have come to the forefront of the public debates surrounding the issues of equity and race, we, as concerned parents, from all creeds, ethnicities, nationalities, religions, race, and socioeconomic backgrounds, feel that there is room for change. However, in our haste and good intent to remedy a problem as a community, we fear that we could exacerbate the very problem we are trying to address if it is not adequately scrutinized by a larger audience with diverging views on the subject. To that end, we question the decision on the selection using the controversial Glenn Singleton's approach. Glenn Singleton's approach professes the idea that valuing written communication over other forms, the scientific linear thinking, cause and effect, is a hallmark of whiteness. This notion is troublesome to many of us. As parents and tax-paying citizens, we want to know if other companies that also teach on this topic were included in the bid? And if so, who were they and what is their model and approach? With, critical race theory has been a topic for some forty years in social studies and academia. It has only recently come, become a topic in mainstream society, who is still in shock with the recent events and utterly divided on their social and racial assumptions. This society includes people like myself, mothers and
Thirty seconds.
Educators, honest, hard-working citizens. We request that you postpone. And I thank you for your time and for listening to us. I here have the petition, which I'll leave on the table for your clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Venus Marshall.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
All right. Dr. Spence, first, I would like to give my salutations and humble thanks to you for governing under these conditions as we're in, in these unprecedented times and in regarding this unprecedented issue.
Ms. Marshall, if you could approach the mic, we'll hear you better.
Okay, thank you. And most of you know who I am, but for those who don't, I am a mother. I am a community leader. I am a wife of a disabled veteran. I am also a thirty-plus-year resident of this city, and this school system has produced positive and productive human beings that I raised. So I thank you all for that. Having said that, I also want to turn around, I'm not turning my back to you, I want to thank you. This is why we're here. I want to thank you. I am also a former employee and educator in this school system as well. And let me put my glasses on, I'm of a certain age, so I need to be able to see. Thank you. I came here just to speak on this very precedent and timely topic. For y'all, it may be topical, but for us, as African-Americans, we live this. There are three Cs that I want you to remember. Triple Cs, care, concern, and compassion. All of us have asked for that at one time or another, from our peers, from church, from our God. So how much greater are we supposed to do that for children that we're cared for? I was struck by a Facebook post, and that's why I'm here, that I read. And having been a former member of this system, I could not believe that we're still dealing, we're still dealing with this. I've worked the late eighties all the way through two thousands, and we're still dealing with this? Care, concern, and compassion. Those of us who have asked for it have received it. So how much greater are we supposed to do that for one another and for the kids that we're in charge of? If someone comes to you and says, or your child, or a community person says, "I need you to hear me," not validate, not say there's not an issue, not say that what you're asking for should not be freely given, because if I'm able to give freely care, concern, and compassion, that's all we're asking for. If your child comes to you and needs that care, caring ear, compassionate ear, and concerning ear, that's what we should give freely, as we should do equitability. It's not a, it's not a rocket science issue, it's not a challenge, it is a fact. The fact that we have to even come and address this issue tells you that there's a problem. And we've been dealing with this same equitable
Thirty seconds.
Department for a number of years, and we're still here? All I'm asking you to do is listen, as Christ would listen to us with care, concern, and compassion, as we would do for our children if they came to us with an issue, we need to do the same for one another, especially in the times that we're living in. If someone says that there's an issue regarding race, then we need to understand that, the human race, because that's what we're talking about. It's about the human race, stop making
And that is time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joyce Williams.
Are we still on in-person? Okay. Hi, I'm Joyce.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Joyce Williams, a concerned lifelong resident. Biases, socioeconomic disparity, exclusion, cultural incompetence, and racism sadly remains in our school system, impeding academic and psychological success of minority students. This harsh reality was infamously proven by Elliot's brown eye, blue eye experiments in nineteen sixty-eight. Conversely, there is prolific evidence of academic success of students of color when provided intentional equitable access to education. Talking about this man-made construct of race is not easy, but it must be confronted because diversity is already here. Forbes magazine article in Forbes magazine article in April stated, twenty-twenty is the year when the majority of all Americans under seventeen years of age are from a minority background. While sitting in my optometrist's office, I couldn't help but overlay the confluence of the pandemic and social unrest during this twenty-twenty year with the twenty-twenty vision I sought. So let me use this twenty-twenty simile as framework to see this issue more clearly. Educational equity is not a program or a policy, and it's more than a moral imperative. It is a legal mandate for the school system to prevent disparate treatment or impact. Secondly, risk assessments would support these proactive measures to maintain a positive city image, mitigate millennial, millennial flight, tourist declines, and economic downturns for business. Conversely, looking through a futuristic lens, we would recognize the payoff to help protect the ecosystem of city budgets and economic growth. Thirdly, opponents will raise issues about the cost of the proposal. Let me encounter, let me counter those arguments directly. There are many types of aid given without stigma in the form of tax breaks, industry subsidies, and resort management offices. Please see that we can focus and pay now or pay later, as an undereducated population will add to the support systems needed for basic social services, food, shelter, medical, and psychological care. However, if we look through a corrected lens with an abundant mentality, we'd see equity would provide more career and college-ready graduates who would add to personal and communal economic security, benefiting all citizens. New York Times bestseller, The Other Wes Moore, tells of two black boys, both named Wes Moore, who were born within a year and blocks of each other. Both had difficult childhoods. However, the writer Wes Moore grew up to be a Rhodes Scholar and a decorated veteran. The other Wes, without access and privilege in edu- equity and education, ended up in prison. Wes, the author writes, "The chilling truth is that his story could have been mine. The tragedy is that my story could have been his." Closer to home, James Ryan, the president of UVA, wrote, "Five miles away, a world apart. One city, two schools, an educational opportunity in modern America." Exploring the disparate.
Thirty seconds?
The disparate opportunities between black and white, and poor and wealthy. In closing, we each see through our own lens. As you peer inwardly, please consider, we need policy and systems in place to ensure that every child has what is needed for success. Please calibrate your lens, invoke far-sighted vision, and vote yes for educational equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that was our last in-person speaker for agenda items.
Thank you. So, uh, it is the will of the board that we continue with Zoom speakers, but we would like it, we're calling for a ten-minute break first. So we will reconvene in ten minutes.